Good evening. A call, the September 24, 2018 work session of the Portsmouth City Council took order. And Madam Clerk, while you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burton?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Tonight, we're honored to meet with our Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board. For the public, the city of Portsmouth has two closed retirement systems, one for general employees and one for police and fire. And again, these systems are closed. And because this is a joint meeting, a meeting of the retirement board, I'll ask the chairman of the retirement board, Sue Burton, to call your meeting to order and call the roll.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, City Manager Patton. I will now call the roll. Laura Bellin?
Present.
Susan Burton, here. Matthew Crutcher. David Harrington?
Here.
Landon Moore?
Here.
Mark Munson?
Here.
Gary Waters? Elizabeth Gooden?
Present.
And Cheryl Spivey?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for first, what you do, because what you do is really important to the city and the retirees and active employees that are still in the system. And we look forward to these now quarterly meetings with you all to get up to speed on how the retirement investments are going and what lies ahead for you. And so with that, I'll ask Dr. Patton if she has any comments.
Mayor, we have our team who's prepared tonight, which consists of two members of the retirement board, Mrs. Gooden and Mrs. Spivey, and our counsel, which is Mr. Ashby, to make a presentation tonight. And it starts with our city attorney.
No, absolutely.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Burton will make a few remarks before we start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to make some more clarification, the Portsmouth Retirement Board are the trustees for the Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System and the Supplemental Retirement System. The Board of Trustees carry out its functions solely in the interest of its members and beneficiaries. The Board's responsibilities include, but are not limited to, establishing, modifying, and/or reaffirming the statement of investment policy, ensuring strategies are in place that are reasonably expected to allow the retirement systems to achieve its goals and objectives, terminating existing and approving new investment managers, hearing appeals as it relates to eligibility for retirement benefits. The Retirement Board has an investment committee that is responsible for ensuring that investment strategy is consistent with the investment policy and is consistent with the system's goals and objectives. The Portsmouth Retirement Board has retained Greystone Consulting as an investment manager to administer and manage the funds of the retirement system. Greystone Consulting is responsible for assembling individual fund managers and funds that make up the funds of the Retirement Board. For instance, as of the second quarter of 2018, the retirement fund is allocated to the following fund categories: total U.S. equity, total non-U.S. equity, total real estate investment trusts or rights, total U.S. bonds, global bonds, and managed futures. The Portsmouth Retirement Board has retained John Hancock Retirement Plan Services, LLC, to provide administrative and actuarial and compliance functions, trustee and retiree administration services, and engagement and education services. Finally, the Portsmouth Retirement Board are the trustees for the trust established pursuant to Section 15.2-1544 of the Virginia Code for the Purpose of Accumulating and Investing Assets to Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashby?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Chairwoman Burton, and members of the Retirement Board. Tonight, this presentation is a bit of a first for both bodies, in part because of Hurricane Florence. We were not able to have our Retirement Board meeting prior to this one. And so this presentation, although it will cover a bit of the information that Ms. Burton highlighted, is a little new, but it is a good refresher in terms of how this board is structured. And then Ms. Spivey is going to give some data with regard to our current status. As has been said, this is the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board. That is how it's classified in the Portsmouth City Code, although it is charged with overseeing the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System. In accordance with Chapter 30 of the Portsmouth City Code, the Board is to consist of seven members appointed by City Council, one being a retired employee. Six additional board members will be either city employees or non-employees. Many of you will recall, in 2016, City Council changed some of the conditions set forth in terms of board composition, in part because we are having fewer and fewer existing city employees that are in the city's legacy retirement system. And in order to accommodate that and to populate this board, we removed some of those restrictions, although City Council pledged to continue to seek support in applicants from the Fire Division, the Police Division, as well as those individuals who were part of the or remain part of the Supplemental Retirement System. To date, I believe, last report, and these are rough numbers, we have approximately 17 active members in both groups, I believe. There are also two non-voting ex-official members of the Board, that being the Chief Financial Officer, or her designee, or the Director of Human Resources, or her designee. And again, in 2016, when the Council addressed the board composition, as opposed to strictly trying to pick individuals out of particular categories in terms of retirement classes, we made a point, Council made a point, to make sure that we pursue individuals that have some financial and investment know-how. The Retirement Board has a number of functions, some of which Ms. Burton has covered, but I'll just cover a few for you today. They are the body that establishes the rules with regard to retirement eligibility, as well as the determination of credible service year. They are tasked with adjusting payments should we ever determine that someone has been overpaid or underpaid in the retirement system. As fiduciaries, it is their job to make sure those corrections are made and the payments are rectified. As Ms. Burton said, the Board members are in fact trustees of the several funds over which they sit, they are empowered to invest and reinvest funds, the original funds put into the Retirement Board, as well as the proceeds of said funds. And as fiduciaries, their requirement is to place those funds in lawfully permissible investment vehicles. In order to discharge their duty, they're also tasked with acting prudently in terms of the investments they make and to take such measures as possible to make sure, one, that there are no large losses. And as Ms. Burton also said, they are also tasked with addressing matters on behalf of all of the retirees and beneficiaries of the Legacy City Retirement Fund. This last slide speaks to what Ms. Burton said in terms of the structure. There's the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board. It has an investment committee that regularly consults with Greystone Consulting in terms of the allocation of funds within the portfolio that the Retirement Board sits over. It is between the determination of the Investment Committee and the advice of Greystone Consulting that the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Board selects those funds and invest those funds for the benefit of our retirees and our legacy system. And with that, Ms. Spivey will come up. Unless anybody has any questions on that part, Ms. Spivey will come up and speak to the finances.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and fellow members of the Retirement Board. I'm going to give an overview of the financial status of the two funds. Just for some historical information, the retirement systems are fiduciary funds held by the city in a trustee capacity. In 2013, the city issued $168.3 million of pension obligation bonds, and these bonds, the proceeds of these bonds were used to make contributions to the underfunded, city-sponsored closed retirement systems. Those contributions from the bonds were estimated to increase the pension assets to 80% of the actuarial accrued liability. And as of June 30 of this year, we still had $141 million of those pension obligation bonds still outstanding. The general fund, enterprise funds, and the other annually budgeted funds provide annual payments to support these retirement systems. $10.9 million of debt service was paid in the most recent year, and that's principal and interest on the bonds. That is a recurring expenditure. It changes slightly over the course of amortizing the bonds, but it stays around that amount each year. $8.3 million was the most recent year's annual required contribution, which was also made to support these retirement systems. That amount is determined by the actuary, and it's done each year. So that amount could change again next year based on the conditions of the funds. And then recently, the operating funds have also made supplements using operating revenues. The funding level at January 1, 2017 is shown on this slide. The most recent actuarial study we have is January 1, 2017. In October of this year, so just a couple of weeks from now, the Retirement Board will be receiving a presentation from the plan administrator, providing us the updated numbers. So those are January 1, 2018. But for tonight, we're talking about the 2017 numbers. The Fire and Police System is 72.4% funded. And the way that calculation works is that system had $175.9 million of assets. However, the liabilities were $243.1 million. That's how the funding percentage is calculated. The supplemental system was funded at 75.9%. I've heard some discussion about what would it look like if we increased the benefits $75 a month? And the actuary had run those numbers for us, it would drop the Fire and Police System funding percentage to 70.6% and the supplemental system to 73.2%. And then the impact of that same scenario of adding $75 monthly to each would be increasing the accrued liability for the Fire and Police Fund would have an immediate impact of $6 million additional dollars to the accrued liability for that fund. And for the supplemental fund, it would have an immediate impact of $2.9 million additional dollars.
We have a question. Bill?
What does that $75 a month relate to?
What's the dollar amount?
Who's it designated for, potentially?
I believe it's all beneficiaries.
No, that wasn't, I think when that was first brought up, it was for the widows and widowers, not for all beneficiaries.
I'm not aware of it was designated for. I do know that there had been discussion of a $70 in last year and somewhat this year, a $75 increase.
Did we get the figure at a future meeting on what that would be?
We can certainly have the actuaries see what the impact would be. The issue becomes a bit trickier in terms of what the capacity is to have that focused on those particular individuals. There are some, the City Code, when it addresses adjustments for the retirement system, one speaks to those as being percentages. I know we have done supplements in recent years that have been directed at groups of individuals, but we can take a look at it. But I just want to, and I'll provide you some information after this meeting, with regard to the adjustments within the system, has been typically a percentage across the board. To my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever picked out a cohort. And I've gotten a report today, and I'll look back over the years, but it's generally been across the board.
I'm sure we can come up with a number with that group, widows and widowers?
I have a question. How would we be able to get an accurate account of that, given that the widow and widow group is a specific group right now, but that group could change over periods of time? So how would that impact be accurately calculated?
We would do our best to identify that, but you're quite right. It is a bit of a moving number, because as Ms. Spivey has said, you're going to make an identification as best you can, as of today, in the records today. But there will be some changes, hopefully not within the reporting period of time, but those numbers change all the time. We have had probably, out of the, when I reference, 17 active members in both classes, that number has dropped three or four individuals over a several months period of time. So it is a snapshot when we come back with those answers. It will be a snapshot.
Okay. Elizabeth?
This never occurred to me before, but when we talk about segmenting out or carving out widows and widowers, are we not talking about giving a supplement to people that actually didn't work for us? Am I?
I think this is a yes or no.
Yeah. I mean, is that the intent, Bill?
What now?
If you, and I'm, I'm just talking out loud.
We've discussed this.
Yeah, I know we have, but this just occurred to me. If we're talking about, say, and we're interested in a supplement for widows and widowers, and we get legal about that, then we're talking about a supplement for people who didn't actually work for us.
No, their respective spouses did. And I think it kind of dovetails with our goal of reducing poverty within the organization. And I think we've had those numbers before, and some of these people are trying to survive on pennies. So to answer your question, yeah, they were part of the workforce family at the time, and some of them were employed.
Okay. I'm really thinking out loud.
Okay. Good. Any other questions at this point?
I got to have one. At what point do we reduce our assets to liability? I mean, is there ever a time in history where that number kind of gets better?
That time has not been defined, but in order to pay, to fully pay out the obligations, there will need to be, if we can continue on as we're going, there will need to be an infusion of cash into the fund.
That infusion either comes by a dynamite year in investing or cash from the City Council.
Or some combination of both.
Are you going to share, speaking of investments, are you going to share the latest returns?
We can provide you the report from the last meeting, which has the results of the last quarterly report with regard to what those numbers are and where they come from in terms of the various funds.
I think that's very germane to what we're discussing here, what kind of return are we getting in today's markets, at least the recent markets, I would think that would be pretty significant. I would hope it would be.
And from the information we've had and we can provide to you all, there have been some early years that have been zero and whatnot. I think the last two years, the last three years have been below 7%. There were one year at 11 and one year at 14. I will tell you, and I've said this to the Supplemental Retirement Board in prior discussions, or was scheduled to tell them in the most recent meeting, in my meetings with the National Association of Public Pension Attorneys, they are discussing the fact that the curve in terms of the upside is sort of curving over. So as you all know, we had a significant dip during the economic decline, and there has been a bit of a catch-up as of recently. But the expectation going forward is that curve is going to bend over. It's not going to keep the same pace it's had.
Well, I'm talking about a comparison of what has been over the past 24 months. I'd like to see the trend.
Sure.
We can provide that.
Of course.
Can you go back to page nine, previous group? So the issue of increasing the funding, $75, and you're saying that's widows, widowers, why is it that your asset size is remaining constant? Is it that we are not making additional contributions?
Well, this is if there are no additional contributions made to the funds, which is why, so that's why the numerator stays the same. The assets stay the same.
So is that realistic, that it would stay the same even though you're increasing the amount that you're taking out of the fund to make this $75 additional payment?
The, you see, the liability is changing.
Right, right.
So, yes, that's the increase in the liability is what the $75.
Well, is the increase in liability the actuarial liability?
Yes.
Right. But don't you have to fund that $75?
Well, we can either fund it out of the assets that are in the system, which is what is driving the percentage down.
Right.
Or fund it by adding additional dollars from the operating funds into the retirement funds.
Well, that was my previous question, well, that relates to my previous question. If you're talking about a moving target such as widows and widowers, then how would we accurately determine how much to actually fund that?
We would only know based on a point in time.
Okay.
And that would change.
And then on slide number, page eight, when you say at the bottom, there are recent supplements have been made from operating revenues.
Right.
How is that different from the general fund funding?
It's the same thing. It's just the first two that are bolded, those are recurring. So those will continue on every year without any additional action. The third bullet is saying, in recent years, we have had some additional action, and that has been supplemented by the general fund and the other operating funds.
Okay, okay. And then my last question, on the, back to slide number nine, how does this impact our credit rating at all when we can't keep ratios?
Yes. Yes. In my discussions with David Port, the city's financial advisors, they've indicated, the rating agencies, this is one of a few areas that they are really focusing on when it comes to Portsmouth. It's extremely important that we keep the ratios, really, the decline in the ratios is not helpful and could feasibly affect our next bond rating.
So our funding policy in regards to these accounts, they're supposed to be at what ratio?
Well, when the bonds were sold, and so when the city went to the rating agencies and presented, the ratio was estimated to be 80%.
Whose estimate was that?
I, [laughing] Mayor, did you talk to that?
Everybody that looked, and the actuary.
So that's not our policy?
The goal was to move forward greater than 80%. What's happened is that since the issuance of the bond, the funding has gone down.
But I mean, do we have, does our policy require a certain baseline percent?
Only what is the standard goal. There's no policy per se that I'm aware of. Now, council may have.
I don't believe there's a policy currently to hold to that number, but that was the presentation, that was the expectation, as the mayor said, 80% and increase over time.
In the industry, the goal was 80% and over the life of the bonds, and the life of the bonds, it would go from 80 to 100%. And what's happened, apparently, it's gone in the wrong direction.
So I guess that goes back to a previous conversation we had with the credit agency. At what point does it become an impact? You know, is it 70? Is it 60? Where does it become an issue?
It's, the next time we go to issue debt, that's publicly marketed. And we do have authorized unissued debt in both utility and general capital projects right now, based on, I guess, the two prior year budgets. The rating agencies, at that time, will, we will be, they will be looking at this. And, oh, excuse me.
But we don't have a definite.
You can't definitely, it's based on where they are.
But one could argue that the answer to your question is that it impacts now, but it's like eating your seed corn. Eat the seed corn, you won't be able to.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because we know what our credit rating is now.
Right.
And I'm curious, if it went to 70, what type of impact would that have?
And the rating agencies aren't going to tell us exactly that, but what they did say in the most recent reports is that this is something that could negatively affect our ratings.
It's critical.
How do we compare with other municipalities in the region, percentage-wise?
I don't have that information.
Percentage-wise, as regard to what, Mr. Moody?
Funded, funded.
Well, I think we're the only, see, that was.
Norfolk, can you produce?
No, but I wasn't going to say that ago. I was going to say something else, but you all.
Now, I think Bill's question is, how does this system compare to other municipal governments that have their own retirement system? Whether it's open or close. And I think there are only two, and that's Norfolk and New Bernice.
You're asking about the percentage of their funds.
We can certainly take a look at it. I think the hitch is. I think the hitch is how they're funded.
Right.
But we can, we can get that information in terms of the percentage funding that they have. And inquire as to the, the kind of funding that they have also, and we can come back with that.
And the return on their investments?
We can inquire and see if we can get that back. I don't know how fast we can get that piece back. And I will say for the benefit of the board, because again, this is a snapshot. The, the retirement board has, over the last year or so, certainly made great strides in terms of, one, I think, and I'm encapsulating the comments over my tenure in the retirement board. They did some things in order to survive the downturn and conservatively hold on to the funds they had. We are now in the midst of further diversifying and improving our positions, and that's where the board is headed towards. But there was a negative down period, downturn for a couple of cycles. And we'll find out where we are comparative to other organizations.
I think the next thing that needs to be addressed is how do we reverse the falling percentage?
Sure.
If we were, Davenport was expecting 80%, and we're trending in the wrong direction. So, what's gonna be the recommendations to reverse that?
I think, I think as Mr. Ashby has indicated, this new retirement board is taking a, and the measures that they have taken, is taking a very strong position on trying to work toward reversing it. And I think there are things, as we have presented here today, that may impact them trying to reverse it. But they are, they are focused on, and their investments and the groups that they have here are very interested in moving it in a different direction. But as it indicated, every time we do something, or we attempt to do something, where we're changing the numbers, then that's impacting the whole system and fund.
She's next, again, I'll get you.
20 minutes ago, one of you mentioned that there was a report that would be coming out in October.
Yes.
What is that report again?
It's, it's the actuary report. It's, it'll be the most recent one, so the 2018.
It might be nice if we, if you shared a copy of that with us when it came.
Yes.
Right.
I see two moving targets, investments and availability of we having money to put into it. And that's gonna be very difficult to manage. I mean, you don't have answers for that. So, I don't know what you could say to say you're gonna improve that. You just have to go back out to the market and look at some other alternatives. Or we have to come up with more money, you know, to, to make it happen.
I think it would be, yeah, I agree. I think it would be useful if we went back in increments of five years for 15 years to look at what the return has been on the investment. And that takes us before the recession, during the recession, and after the recession. So, if you all could give us a 15-year graph that shows what the return has been on the investments, I think that would be useful and answer a lot of the questions here at the table. And then to summarize, Bill, as, as for comparison, a comparison of our ratio with other municipal retirement systems, the funding ratio. And maybe the, just the Hampton Roads is too small of a pool, so if you could do that for the whole statewide, there are not many. Okay, is that agreeable with everybody?
I think we would all agree that the board that we have constituted, we, the council has constituted now, no offense to the city employees, but the addition of actual financial people to the board to work with the, the financial professionals, I think has made a tremendous difference.
Can you go to slide 10, please? You arrived at 6 million and almost 3 on, but is that your number and you did it by net present value?
It's based on the, the changes in the actuarial liabilities. They're increasing firing police, 249 million from 243, and the supplemental from, from 81 to 84. Yes, and those were, those were, the numbers were prepared by the actuaries.
Okay.
And how many, how many persons are in each one of those systems again?
About 15 each, I believe. Is that right, current? Oh, okay, okay, okay. You're talking about that we're making payments to. I don't, I don't have that number, but we'll get, we'll get that to you with the.
Presently 15 that are.
That are contributing, that are contributing. Active, active employees.
Still, still working.
Yes.
Was that your question?
Well, I think I was speaking more to what, what is the total?
How many, how, what's the number that, or, yes. And I don't have that number in front of me, but I will provide that with the rest of the information.
Okay.
Total number in each system.
Could you do that again in a historic perspective?
We can.
Don't go back that 15 years, but on this case, go back five. That shows the number of active employees and the number of beneficiaries.
Yes.
And that'll give us some idea of what the retirement rate is and what the attrition rate is on the, on the benefit side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does, but, so what are they going back? I mean, Bill has kind of made it clear he was talking about smaller group. Are you sending them back for the whole, like they presented? Or, or narrow it to the group that Bill was requesting?
I think they could maybe get back on, with that information. Yes, and how do you feel about it?
Well, I would like to know it.
Okay.
Well, I, I don't see how, how, I don't see the benefit of knowing just that group because the impact is gonna change over, over the years. I know what you're asking, but that widows and widowers, that, that's gonna change. And so that, the data you get could become obsolete.
It's just a snapshot.
Yeah, just a picture of where it is now. Not in the future, but whatever day they pick to do it.
Are you okay with?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So our request is clear? And this is to our staff, not to, not to the board. A 15-year look at the return on the investments. A comparison between our funding ratio and other.
Municipal ratios.
Municipal retirement systems in the state. And that ought to be a five-year trend, too. And then a five-year breakout of active per, per system and beneficiaries. The way.
Yeah. At the same time, not every day, just.
No, not.
Just for the year.
Yeah. All right, we're good?
Can I make one comment?
You may.
Regarding what you said, as far as we either have to earn our way out or we have to contribute, I think it's probably not likely that we can sort of earn our way out of the hole. And I think we're gonna be doing a, a study, the actuary asset liability study soon. And they can calculate, assuming that we earn our projected investment return of, say, 7%, what contribute, contributions need to make, be made to get you to 100% funded. And that's a, you know, a number that could be, could be calculated now. Of course, market conditions can, can change that, but I, I think it's highly unlikely to earn our way out of the hole.
I believe you.
And an example is, we have about $230 million of assets. We're paying out something close to 30 million. Well, you're not gonna earn 15% return to, to make those payments every year. I mean, it's not, it's not realistic.
Well, there's two points, there's another point here, too. This council and all future councils need to be concerned and careful not to increase the liability in whatever way that happens.
And I think.
Whether it's through a one-time supplemental payment or an increase in, I know that sounds harsh. But again, if you pay out, you gotta pay it. So, bring. Is that it?
That's the end of our presentation, mayor.
Just questions or comments?
Any questions of, of myself or the comments by the board?
Let's hear from the board.
A lot of what you all have asked us questions does come up periodically in the reviews that we get from Greystone. And in fact, I'm sitting here frantically thinking about some of the charts and reports that we have received. So it's not going to be a really difficult thing for us to get some of those figures to you. But there have been some additional questions that you all have asked, specifically that they don't necessarily address when they come and present to us. And they do present to us on a quarterly basis. So, we're monitoring everything as closely as we possibly can, and we're trying to make as much money as we possibly can, considering whatever the fluctuations of the markets are.
Can you explain to us how to manage the funds? Either you have a manager, managers, just exactly what it, what do you, how's that structured?
Well, I mean, they have a whole lot of managers that are working for them. And I'm probably not the best person. I'm a generalist. And we have a couple of much better financial people here, even though they're relatively new to the board. But they look at, at how the different managers are operating. And of course, some of them, you want to have a very conservative approach. Because if the market drops suddenly, you want something that's gonna, you know, hedge your bets and keep you above water. But then you want some, some of your funds to be a little more aggressive and make a higher percentage so that those things can balance out. And that's my very basic knowledge of finance. We, like I said, we have two people here who on the, the investment committee, and they've been working very closely with our advisor to try to figure out, you know, which things do we still wanna consider as part of our funds? And which ones do we wanna move on to? Do you wanna address any more of that?
Sure. So, as was said a couple times, Greystone Consulting advises and manages the funds for us. They're a division of Morgan Stanley. It's a very deep team they have and very experienced. It's a great shop. We recently changed the relationship with them from a, a, from a setup where they strictly advised the staff and board on recommendations, and then the board had to make decisions to hire and fire managers, investment managers. We changed the relationship that Greystone can make those hiring and firing decisions of the underlying money managers by themselves. And they're, this just recently, at our last meeting, was, was formally, so Greystone, together with staff and the board, advises on a, on an investment allocation to the, to different asset classes, bonds, equities, real estate, et cetera. That creates the policy that Greystone can work under and the framework. And they pick the, the individual managers that are gonna run, you know, the real estate investments, who's gonna run the US large cap, et cetera. And they're sort of constructing the money managers.
And within each category of, of money managers, we actually get quarterly reports where their funds manager is benchmarked against that same, that same spectrum within the larger industry. So we, we get some good comparisons. And, and part of the reason for going to the, the relationship that we have with, with Greystone now is, exactly, you know, the, the market can change quickly. And if they, if we have set a good risk policy, a good risk strategy that they understand and, and we're comfortable with them, they can move within those boundaries quickly without having to, mother may I, at the next monthly meeting.
For quite a while, we were very conservative with the money we had. Because, and obviously with being conservative, the return wasn't quite as much. So, once we got where there was more money and the influx and everything, then we weren't quite so conservative, but still trying to manage everything appropriately. But we weren't quite as tight, maybe would be the right word, just being able to use those funds.
And we did reallocate our fund balances so that we did have the opportunity to invest less conservatively in some areas, but still keep the fund that was, would allow us a baseline so that we didn't fall flat on our faces.
No large losses.
No large losses. It's a, you know, as you, you know, with your personal experiences, balancing act all, all over. But reallocating our expenses or our funds was a primary change that we made. I believe it was over a year ago now, and we have seen the returns bump up as a result of that.
What is your largest asset category that you allocate to?
Mid-cap.
It's equities.
I was gonna guess that.
We had a large allocation to a, a fund called Schaefer Cullen.
Schaefer.
Which was, it's a income orientated fund, meaning they, they invest in a lot of companies that pay dividends. So it's, it's sort of a safe, safe equity play if you, if you, if you will. So, some of that, I believe that was somewhere around 40% of the portfolio.
Yes, yes.
Taken it down to maybe 20%.
20%.
And now that Greystone's operating under new capacity, I think in the coming months, they're gonna recommend a, probably tweaking the asset allocation further. I'd be hesitant now, considering we're in the, what is it, ninth or 10th year since the, the recession, that now may not be the best time to increase risk, but so much when the next sort of recession could be right around the corner. So, we have to be, we have to be careful not sort of re-risking too, too much.
How many broad categories do you have, equities, bonds, real estate?
And we have one that's. International.
Bonds, global bonds, managed futures.
So, I think there are about 10 or 12 individual managers. But the, the broad sort of asset classes are, you know, US, non-US equity, emerging markets, real estate, and some fixed income.
Would council be interested in seeing that pie on how the assets are allocated?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that probably, that's not part of the next month's report? It'd be part of your quarterly report anyway.
That's very easy.
Of course, I don't know who can answer this, but when we look at what liability council has to fund for retirements, when we look at these two, the fire, police, and the supplemental, are any persons in any of these retirements that are also part of VRSA, a VRS? I mean, well, are they all either in here or not?
Yes, they can be. They can be in both. If they've retired from the city.
Yes, they can be under a current VRS, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, as far as persons who are part of these two retirements, are they receiving retirement through fire, police, supplemental, and in addition, VRS?
I could retire at 20 years. I'm vested in the FIRE system. I can go and get a job and get in the VRS and stay there for 20 years.
So, we... so as far as liability, we're paying VRS as well as Fire Police?
I'm not saying that they're entering VRS with a City of Portsmouth job.
What I'm asking is of the persons who are presently part of the Fire Police and supplemental, are any of them of the beneficiaries, are they also receiving VRS?
Not for the same service.
Yeah.
Not as of yet. We do have people that are back employed with the city that are being paid under the Fire Police, but they haven't reached retirement where they're vested in VRS yet. There will come a time when they will be vested in VRS.
And they're in the city or outside of the city?
Both.
They could be both.
All right. Other questions?
Can you think of this like... because Greystone, they manage, and you said that they have the ability now and authority to move money to around, and so it doesn't work like you how 401Ks work, if... when they move certain sums around, they send you a perspective so you know about what they're putting it in and what they're doing, or is that a larger scale?
They are allowed to do that on their own, report to us after the fact.
As long as they stay within the investment policy.
There's a policy that gives a framework for what they can and can't do.
But they do report to us when they do it?
Right.
They couldn't go put all the money in big coin?
So, you know where it's going each time they do that?
Not the minute, but...
Well, I know. I understand that.
Shortly thereafter.
Okay.
We did, as a group, change that because it was having to wait so long. By the time it would actually get to us, it could be a month later at least, and then there were issues. By the time it got to us, maybe that happy time was gone.
And I think that's probably made, like I heard you already say, it makes things better as far as putting money where it needs to be quicker.
What questions do you have else?
One more question. So, now that both of these retirement funds are closed, correct? No one else can... so there are persons in the city who are earning significantly more or potentially significantly more retirement because they can be a part of both of these systems as well as VRS?
Well, they can only be in one or the other of the systems. You can't be supplemental and Fire Police.
What I mean by that is they could be in one as well as earning VRS, but now that it's closed, those persons are in line to earn significantly more in retirement than persons presently working today who are just in VRS.
Well, as Mr. Harrington said, a lot of the people who retired when they're younger, they can't receive that retirement until they turn 60 or 62, so they're not getting that retirement yet, but yes, by the time they retire from the VRS, they could be receiving both and of course get significantly more money.
And there are people that have retired under the Fire Police that are currently working under VRS jobs, so they're either in other cities. I think we have a couple here, but they are still earning under VRS, so whether they're working for us or whether they're working for, say, the City of Portsmouth.
All right. Well, thank you very much. You wanted to adjourn your meeting. We still have work to do.
Could I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting us.
We'll take just about a three-minute recess to allow you all to...
Have a good night.
I didn't look in. I spilled water all over the place.
All right.
I got one and it was...
I saw the water.
What happened?
Some of our levels only require, some years of time only require five years. I think it's a five, 10 periods per best.
That was the biggest loss.
So, somebody came out, you and I, give the first five years, one of my friends, what can they plan in that day? And while we've got no... man, he's forever. Well, when we get to 62, you can come back and file. He'll get at least whatever for his five years and whatever he got at whatever other job, but that's why that Fire Police number is significant, because they're trying period shorter. They had them shorter, but now we'd say we see at 62. Back then it was five, 10 years and 50 or 60, depending on which one. That's why the Fire one is great, because they...
The difference is the City of Portsmouth is the only city in the Commonwealth.
And then everybody goes, "We are gonna be sure to get the..." don't understand fiscal operating, and they are looking at it because they want to give them five, even if we give them five, we're not rejecting. And there is no gold pot at the end of it, not one rainbow that I didn't see. That's a lot of money. But I can remember that when I was here in...
Our first presentation this evening, Mr. Daniel Jones, Chief Information Officer, will provide an in-depth overview of the Portsmouth Community Broadband Network Infrastructure, or PCBN. Broadband will provide access to a wide range of resources, services, and products that can enhance the quality of life for our citizens in a variety of ways: education, culture, entertainment, telehealth, telemedicine, economic development, commerce, electronic government, or e-government, and public safety. This infrastructure is a foundational layer of all next-generation smart city applications. PCBN is a key component of Portsmouth becoming a smart city, energizing economic development and competing on a regional and national level. The second presentation, Mrs. Erin Trumier, Director of Public Utilities, will provide an overview of the Department of Public Utilities, the ongoing capital improvement projects, and the systematic planning is underway in support of the department's objectives. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. As requested, our presentation this evening will focus on all aspects of the Portsmouth Community and Broadband Network, or PCBN. So, the overview for this evening's presentation is what is the PCBN, the Strategic Fiber Master Plan, what the network infrastructure looks like, a network topology, the financial impacts, the generate of revenue opportunities, and the regional connectivity. So, what is the PCBN? The PCBN is 55 miles of fiber infrastructure. This network will connect 56 community anchor institutions, or CAIs. This is hospitals, public schools, community colleges, HRT, any kind of connectivity that is within our community. The ring topology consists of three points of presence, and a point of presence is basically a building or a shelter where the networking gear, you actually transmit the send-and-receive part of the data. So, we have three of those for redundancy and resiliency. That way, if there is an issue somewhere on the ring or within one of those shelters, the network is not completely bound. This project was a FY 2018 Capital Improvement Project funded at $750,000 and $2.7 million for the FY 2019. The construction is slated to be a five-year project or a phased approach, and we have that designed out depending on what year that is. So...
So, just for the average user that's listening, how is this gonna impact this, the, a regular user, telephone, internet? I mean, how... what would this do?
A regular user at this point will not see a difference, because they still have to purchase service through a service provider. The municipality within Virginia, without going through legal steps, cannot be a service provider, but the municipality can invite competition for the citizens to use the same network.
So, the service provider will tap into this network?
Absolutely.
And then the end user, based on who your service provider is?
Yeah. The telecom corporation, if they don't have service in a particular location, it's too expensive to build for X number of residents, then they could do a joint venture or a joint with the city, use our infrastructure to reach those residents, and provide connectivity for them.
And that service provider would compensate the city?
Yes.
For using that?
Yes. Absolutely.
In other words, we're not the last mile of the system?
No. We are the middle mile. So, as part of this is the Strategic Fiber Master Plan, which we presented before, and that master plan outlined the strategic importance of the municipal fiber asset. It determined the strategic deployment of the fiber. That means wherever in the city, it is a holistic approach. We're not just deploying it here, there, or everywhere. It's a holistic approach taking into consideration all of our community anchor institutions and any development projects. Do it right the first time and be done with it. It defines the standards and specifications for future fiber build-outs and the identification of internal and external stakeholders. Now, within that plan, the internal stakeholders, of course, were your internal departments. External stakeholders were surrounding municipalities, HRT, public schools, the hospitals, TCC. We met with all of those and put the information within this fiber master plan.
So, the antennas that we see throughout the city now for the different carriers, will this be tied into that, or is that something totally different?
Define what you mean antennas.
What do you call them?
Monopoles.
Cell towers.
Okay. In the situation of a cell tower, you have... that infrastructure has to be there, but as that infrastructure comes down, the monopole, it has to get on some type of fiber to get to the internet.
Gotta come to us.
So, that would be potential, as we'll discuss, revenue generating leases that the city could do to ride our infrastructure.
Picking up on your question, if you have a cell tower, it may or may not be connected to the fiber.
Right. If the carrier wants to bear the expense to do it, they have... it's absolutely their choice, but... I'm sorry.
One thing that's happening now with Verizon and Cox, they have a lot of old infrastructure, and they... in certain areas, they've already made a decision that they are not going to fiber, and one of the areas is Cavalier Manor, half Cavalier Manor. They're not right outside. They aren't going to fiber, so you can't get files, which is a much better signal. And Cox the same way. They... and back to Verizon, they still got copper, you know, infrastructure out there that's old, and it goes down frequently, and Cox the same way. They have amplifiers out there also that are old, and they have to come out and tweak them a couple of times a year, so you won't get the tie-in effect, and they don't plan on investing in fiber, which is the way to go in what's coming in the future to eliminate a lot of that.
Do we know what areas of the city are outside the fiber network of Verizon?
Of Verizon? Oh, I know. I am. In Churchill. In Churchill, and I cannot get files, and they told me I'll never get it.
And what can we do as a municipality to...
Go on, Mr..
Do you have an answer to that?
I do, and I think it'll feed into...
Yes, Mr..
My analogy of my understanding of what Mr. Jones is doing is the equivalent to, say, building US 17 or US 64, or let's say High Street in Portsmouth. This will build High Street from a technology standpoint, which makes it more likely that we can get a road or driveway to each and everybody else's house.
Yes.
And I think Mr. Jones is gonna go and provide the rest of the detail for you, but essentially, that is the service line that will allow other folks to tie in and improve the service around it.
So, does that address the issue that Mr. Smith just brought up as far?
I think that's the only thing within the realm of current viewpoint that will get to that.
So, the service provider, even though they can't provide that service now, but they can use the city's infrastructure to expand to Cavalier Manor or wherever.
They can buy the city's infrastructure.
They can buy.
There's that potential, right.
They still have to pay, and that's... I talked... my last tenure on City Council, I was able to talk with somebody very high up in Verizon, and because of the saturation of certain areas with other providers, they don't want to invest, you know, in certain parts.
Sure.
Other than if it's new, and they can, you know, they can get all of the customers. They don't want to piecemeal. Say, like in Cavalier Manor, you have a lot of Cox cable, and you have old Verizon. If they can't get the whole thing, they don't think it's worth the investment.
Right. The greenfield development, when they can capture 200 residents, that's what they're...
Dr. Pat?
Yeah. Mayor and members of council, if you remember last, maybe it was this year, early part of this year, we took, myself and Mr. Jones met with the Water View Civic League, which they have 420 residents who were having major issues with Cox. We had the vice presidents and six, a team of six, come out of Atlanta, and pretty much what you're saying is what they told us, that they were where they were, they were not gonna upgrade, they would... they were saying something's wrong with it coming to your house, you need to do something, but it's a major issue with service. As Mr. Jones just said, let it rain in some communities, your internet immediately is going out.
And Glenn Sheeler, you can't call a landline when it rains?
No, and so this is...
I got several friends who landlines.
We're moving to a whole new direction. Go on, Mr. Jones.
Okay. So, now this is part of the network infrastructure. I have an actual demonstration piece of what a fiber would look like. Your outer black part is your jacketed shell that keeps it from breaking, and if you look at the brown, what we refer to as a buffer tube, there is 12 little pieces of fiber. You have to... I even have to look at it pretty close, but this is what's represented here. So, if you have...
I see it every day.
So, if you have the brown buffer tube, there's 12 small strands of fiber within each tube. So, you have 12 buffer tubes, 12 strands, 144-count fiber.
What do you mean 144-count fiber?
There's 144 separate fibers in that one. There's 144 separate fibers in that one.
12 times 12.
Yeah, 12 and 20.
Yeah. Now, what we're installing is actually 288. That is double what that cable is. And the reason you want to do that is you build capacity for leasing opportunities, revenue generation, things of that nature. Because once you get it in the ground, it's best to do it the first time.
Mr. Jones, are there some in water, too? Are there some underwater?
Yes. And that's going back to the point with the copper, there was a study that was done regarding sea level rise and the copper infrastructure, that is, it continues, that's going to take out your copper infrastructure. So that's why some of the carriers are going to fiber or jail field. If it's jail field, water cannot penetrate it and it stays up.
You're saying in...
So if you take one of those single strands...
This is fiber?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the generalized of what the construction would look like. And per the Chapter 32, Article 5, all new infrastructure has to be underground. So this is not going to be going from pole to pole or power line to power line. It's all underground. You'll never see it. But if you take...
Before you leave that slide, any questions on that? And that's the conduit?
Yes, conduit, as well as the fiber that goes within the conduit.
Am I good?
So now, the network infrastructure is basically just the median. And the technology associated with the transmission of information is a lot pulses along with glass. Each one of those fibers is glass. If you were to shine a light down it, it would light up. The network infrastructure references a design of strands or pairs for information. You don't want to run just a single piece of fiber, you want redundancy. So that's why they usually call it a pair, two fibers. The network topology consists of a linear or a ring design. You don't want it to be a point-to-point, then you're inviting failure into the network. A ring, as long as they're somewhere on the ring, they got two ways of egress and ingress. The network infrastructure provides high capacity of information transmission over increased distances. It's a common transmission method of internet and mobile service providers. And like I alluded to, it's underground infrastructure with a dig-wants strategy. And we're working with that with other departments. When we're doing other utility work, things of that nature, we will advise and look and see if we can put infrastructure there while the road is open rather than go back a second time. Now, if you take one piece of strand of that fiber, it would take that much copper to do what that one single piece of glass can do.
What?
So one of those small little strands, pieces of glass, can transmit the bandwidth that it would take that much copper to transmit.
And we did that, may I ask a question? We had that, that was what we used, beginning till when? When did we start using that in the country?
Oh, in the country? I mean, well, there's still copper in place today. Yeah. It's, there's a mixture. The carriers, where it is cost beneficial, they are going to fiber. Where it's not, they're letting the copper expire, and when it goes, it goes. So like I was alluding to, the network topology, you'll have the ring, which would be around the city. And then each of those computers off the ring would represent a municipal facility, fire station, police station, public school, whatever that may be. So the financial impacts. The current reoccurring contract cost, which what the city has is with Cox Communications. Just the municipal departments, we spend $516,000 a year. The public schools spend $608,964, but they have an 85% to 90% subsidized by the federal government. But this is cost from the carrier.
So the 608 is the total cost, not net?
Correct. But the schools are paying 85% to 90% of that 608 dependent upon where the E-rate numbers come into play. Public libraries, $28,836. So what the provider is getting from the city or through tax is right at $1.1 million a year. Now, the financial impacts. If the city does nothing whatsoever, we stay with the carrier that we have now, over 20 years, we're going to pay $23 million. And I will stress that that is no upgrades, nothing, that's no more Wi-Fi expansion, that's nothing. That's just as it is, sets right now, date and time. If we ask a incumbent ISP, Cox, Verizon, to build the same network that we have designed and engineered, it would be upwards of $40 million. But our plan, the municipal network, is 8.3. So if you take what we're spending, just the city alone, $516,000, if we do nothing else, at 8.3, your return on your investment is within, well within your 20-year mark. So the provider connection bandwidth, now this is the bandwidth of what we send all of our data outside of the city to the internet. If we complete the network and we're able to tie into data centers or wholesale places, Richmond, Virginia Beach, transatlantic, we can get upwards of 1 gigabyte connection. So that's 1,000 megabytes for $1,500. That same connection from a provider is $6,800.
Explain the 15 to 68. Is that per year?
No, that's per month.
Per month.
If you were a business coming in to the city, say, and you had telehealth, high bandwidth capacity needs, and you needed 10 gigabyte of service, what these manufacturing plans do, it's upwards of $24,000 a month, just for connectivity. So the generation of revenue opportunities, if, like I said, if we do nothing, this takes care of our reoccurring. It pays for itself by doing nothing, just putting it in the ground and using it for municipal operations. The middle-mile leasing strategy, as we alluded to, carriers want to come in, provide service, or they need to get across the city. Every day seems like there is a new company that wants to have a landing in Virginia Beach. They have to come through Portsmouth one way or the other. So that's part of the regional connectivity. You ride the fiber and then everybody wins with it. The possibility of economic development incentives. And what that is, is we market the city with high speed, high bandwidth connectivity. That draws business alone. Because businesses are not looking now for location. I got to be at the corner of this and that. They don't care now. Give me connectivity, I'm good. That as well as business attraction. And this also helps us with the digital divide inclusion that we're working on with PRHA for low-income, underserved members of our community. And of course, the assets of the regional connectivity, the regional connectivity ring, which is the Regional Broadband Steering Committee. Public safety interoperability, when we start talking about tying in public safety infrastructure, you'd be able to transfer calls or see where units in other cities are. It gives a whole lot more. As well, once again, regional economic development, educational connectivity, and of course, the fostering of a regional workforce for technology. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Let's go with Lisa, and then we'll go Dr. Woodaker, then Ray.
The cable that we have, and I know that they said it's going to be a dig-wants kind of thing, so when you put that in, and I know that at the meeting that we attended, each one of these colors are supposed to represent like a business, school, different kinds of divisions. So how do you connect if it's already underground when somebody else needs to get connected?
The fiber lines will come into one of the three points of presence, and that is where they're spliced together to make that connection.
Ray. No, Dr. Woodaker, I'm sorry. So the question, where I believe we left off last meeting, so if it's 8.3 million, then how are we planning on paying for it? Through, and I don't, that's not, through a tax, through the bond, through public-private? I think that was the question.
Along with that, why do we need a private partner? Do you have an answer to the question?
Yes, I think I can. And I'm just saying this because there are a couple of transition points. The city currently has a PPEA, and Mr. Ammons is going to back me up when I say something there. The city currently has a PPEA out on this project. It will generate responses. Those responses will, in fact, and I'm trying to make sure I answer everyone's question, those responses may generate, will all address the infrastructure piece. But some may just have a straight-out cost, some may have some sort of financial option along with it, which we would somewhat classify as public-private. That would be what would make it different than our regular procurement. In the process of evaluating those, the committee that evaluates those processes, the city is free to say, if the cost is 8 million, let's say the cost is 8 million, the cost is 8 million, but we'll finance three of it, the city is always free to say, no, we'll just pay the $8 million. But the proposal may come in with those various financing options within it. But the city is always free to go its own route in a PPEA in terms of paying its own costs. It's not obligated to take a option that's proposed.
Before you ask your question, can you put Slide 10 up? Because I think it might help the discussion. That's the system, that's what we're going to build, right? Okay.
So the 8.3 million, that's the estimate for putting in this?
Yes.
So the question is, again, so we know if we go through a tax, we already know how much one cent brings in revenue-wise. I think, what you said, Dr. Pat, is it 700?
773,000. That was in this last budget.
So you amortize that out over 20 years, more, it'll pay out before then. So why would we, we know that if we go through a public-private, that that party is going to want a return. So that's the question that I'm trying to get to. Why are we even considering public-private if it's a premium that we're going to be paying versus just either tax or bond?
Ray had his hand up.
Well, what I was going to ask, and I think it can be answered via his question, it's going to not only cost the bill, but it's going to cost to maintain and operate. And I'm assuming that we are looking at some help. So we're looking at a public-private partnership for somebody to help bear some of this. And that's going to cost, too, depending on who it is and what the arrangements. But my question was going to be, how are we going to pay for operating it and like repairs and maintenance? Because this isn't perpetual. There's things that can happen to the system, like people digging into it and tearing it apart or getting damaged, you know, just over the years from use and lack of use. This fiber, even though it's going to be in conduit, it has to come out someplace and go in the junction boxes and people connect to it all over. That's the part that requires a lot of maintenance. And my question was going to be, you know, who's going to pay for that? And I'm just assuming that that's why we're looking at a...
I'm going to ask Mr. Ammons.
Yeah, defray some costs.
Let's get re-centered and get back to Dr. Woodaker's question. In round numbers, it's going to take 8.3 million to build the ring right there?
Yes.
And the connections. The way to finance that, you could do it with cash. You could do it with debt.
Right.
If you did it with cash, it would all come from the city. If you did it with debt, it would all come from the city. The other alternative is a public-private partnership. And I think what council is looking for, what's the advantage of the public-private partnership that makes it the best alternative over paying for it either with cash by the city or debt issued by the city? And that's the question that hasn't been answered clearly. You may have answered it before, but it's not clear to council tonight.
Can we ask Mr. Ammons to come up and speak, please, in regard to the PPE?
Well, you can, but I think that question, though, I don't, I'm not sure that we can state it any simpler. It's going to take 8.3 to build that, okay? How do you pay for that? You can pay for it by cash.
All right.
You can pay for it by debt issued by the city, or you can do a public-private partnership. And the question is, why is the, which is the most cost-effective for the city?
Question. On this, you know, we're looking at the 8.3 million to construct it. How long of a timeframe would it take to construct this?
As it's currently designed, it's five years or five phases.
And that's what I was looking at with those phases. So we're looking at over five fiscal years.
Right.
So it's not 8.3 right off the bat. It would be divided out by five.
But it's still the same.
Well, sure, sure.
Because there's 750 that was in '18, and there's 2.7 in '19. So it's even less than 8.3.
The other way to pay for it, I would like to, would be return on investment, the revenue. Do we have any idea, even ballpark idea, what kind of revenue it could produce?
And that depends on the carriers that want to be a part of it. As I said before, just the return on the investment of the reoccurring monthly charges that the city then is no longer paying to an incumbent provider that pays for itself.
Have we had any preliminary conversations?
Yes.
With any of the carriers?
Yes.
Is there interest?
Yes, there is.
I mean, that's, when you're talking about paying for it, I would think the revenue would be a huge part.
Is that the point of the PPE?
Ray's statement about maintenance and the general operation of it, I think is a valid I think we need that entity to do that.
But even, and I hear what you're saying, even if the revenue is going to pay for it, why would you want to, we don't know if you're going to be using more of your revenue to pay for expenses if you go through a PPA versus going through a tax. That's why, I know the revenue can pay for it, but how much of our revenue would we be giving away with any type of expense?
With our product partner.
Right.
Yeah. One thing that was left out in my explanation, and I'm doing this to test my understanding, 8.3 to build, and once it gets built, it's cheaper going forward for the next 20 years than if we stayed with what?
Right.
Okay. So that just enhances the argument that why have a private partner in this? And then when you add bills, you know, concept that you lease out space, a company in Carrollton and Olive White wants to tie at the beach, they come through Portsmouth, they pay us. That's just gravy. You need to explain to us why there's a need to have a private partner here.
And there wasn't a sole decision to have a private partner. We wanted to examine every option that we had to get this network. And that is, as you alluded to, cash, debt financing, or if a partner wanted to come in 50/50, whatever that may be.
And we don't know that yet because we have not dealt with any proposals or what the possibilities are, whether we do it cash, whether we find a partner, whether we, whatever. We don't know that yet.
Well, clearly, we have the capacity to do this ourselves, it sounds like financially.
Yes, but then you have other things, liabilities, other maintenance and other things that we could look at through a PPA. What are the proposals addressing, which address those kinds of things long-term?
Well, you can always contract operations out. You could contract, and then you don't have an equity partner. Why have an equity partner when you can contract it out?
Absolutely. You might want to see what that partner has to bring to the table.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Because if it's another company with the capability to do what we need to do, then that's a good partner. And if it's a partner just wanting to put money into it, then you want to second that. But if that partner has, is equipped to do a lot of these things that will save us some costs, then it's worth that partner.
Yeah, understand.
But how would we know, if we're just dealing with this one partner, how would we know without having any competitive bid on something like subbing out operations? How would you know you're getting?
How competitive bidding the partner?
That's, Mayor, for Mike, that was the point. That was a part of why we went PPEA, because it allows those who are in best position to give you offers, elements and options and considerations when they come in. Certainly, it would be the equivalent of, we have obtained national experts that can give you an estimate of what the cost is, and that's where that 8.3 comes in. But for instance, your company's expertise may have some elements to it that add value in terms of the whole operation. You'll present that in your proposal. Councilman Clark will present it in his proposal. The expert committee sits there and calls and goes through all those proposals and sees what's the most beneficial. Cost, of course, is a part of it. But for instance, you may find, as Councilman Smith is referring to, you may find that there's an operational component of it. And let's say it even costs a few more dollars than the estimate you have here. You can still determine, once you see that final proposal and those terms, that the experts have said, here's your best deal that we see for you. You can still say, we don't want the financing part of it. We'll put the cash down, and we want the options, but not the financial part of it. You have that option. But when you're dealing with these highly technical operations, you tend to give it off to the experts who do it all the time, because they will think of wrinkles that we don't have the capacity all the time here in the city. Yes, we can build it, we can gather those folks, but you essentially have a public procurement process on steroids, which is a PPA. Because now I come in and I give you a couple of options as opposed to just saying straight cash value. And you typically do that when you have a unique skill set that you're trying to get out of the market, because the private market approaches things a bit differently than we do in the public sector.
I think maybe the comfort for the majority of council, maybe all of council, is to make sure that we haven't defaulted the decision to the public-private partnership alternative. And I think what we're hearing tonight is that it's one of the options that's going to be evaluated.
Yes.
You're going to bring that back to us, and we're going to make the decision.
We're going to present to you what we find through this process.
As long as it hasn't been, I'll use the term.
Sign on the dotted line.
Well, defaulted already. This is the only alternative.
No.
Is that, is my expression?
Yes.
Yes, and this basically is a fact-finding information, and it's just bringing information to us, and then we can make a decision after that. So, it's not, the decision hasn't been made, it's just to bring information in.
Okay. Bill? To get some idea of the amount that we're talking about, why can't we put a RFQ out for maintenance operation? That way, we have two looks, the public-private look and also the results of RFQ, RFP. Let's hear from Dan.
The, there is, what is within this PPEA, RFP, is construction-only. Later down the line, once there is infrastructure and ground, then that's when your operations break fix and all that comes into play, and that will be a separate bid. And I will tell you what the Virginia Beach has. They do their construction, but Cox Communications has the break-fix operations portion of it.
So, so, so you're just saying that the PPA is construction-only?
Yes.
Well, that's, I thought that's what we were saying, why we want to see the difference, because operations and maintenance was brought into it. But if it's just construction-only, then it goes back to the original issue, the cost, what's the benefit of doing the PPA versus just?
We don't know that.
We have to see. We don't know yet.
That makes it even more of a case, I think, where we should put the construction out on the RFP.
Because the last thing that we want to do is have a public-private partnership where we'll be holding to that carrier, like we are now. If we're going to do that, then we just stop this and continue with costs.
You have summarized what our concern is.
We just wanted to review.
That's what's driving us. I mean, we understand it. We finance it. We own it.
Yeah, that's right.
We can do whatever we want to do.
Whether we pay cash or debt financing.
Yeah, this is not 80 million dollars. This is eight. Right.
It's really between this fiscal year and next fiscal year, there's only 4.8 approximately left.
Because when it comes to the regional connectivity and incentives, if we own it, then we have control. Otherwise, we're beholden to decisions that are not within our control.
Are we talking about a five-year span? Not all at once?
It's just options. That's all it is. You might not take any of them.
Can we sum it up? I think council, and listening to everybody, we're finding comfort that, number one, the decision has not been made, that this is just one more financing-type option.
Option to consider.
That you're going to evaluate, and once the numbers, the analysis is done, you're going to bring it back to us, and we'll make the decision.
We'll make the presentation.
Is that what everybody's hearing?
Yes.
I heard that the first time.
I know he did. He said.
Okay, well, we're not escorting some people.
Okay, all right. Thanks. All right. Mrs. Stromier will come forward. Thanks, Mr. Jones.
You know, he is Navy, so he likes stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. This was a good discussion.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mrs. Stromier, members of council will come forward, and she's going to share with us an overview of the Department of Public Utilities' ongoing capital improvements and the systematic planning to address the department's objectives. Mrs. Stromier.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, Members of Council. I am pleased to be here tonight to provide you a brief overview of the Department of Public Utilities and an update on our initiatives and capital projects. Public Utilities is responsible for the production and delivery of drinking water that meets or exceeds all state or federal requirements, and the operation and maintenance of the water distribution system and sanitary sewer collection systems. Public Utilities directly serves approximately 100,000 customers within the city of Portsmouth and a small portion of Chesapeake. Through wholesale contracts to the city of Chesapeake and Suffolk, the total population served is approximately 150,000. Public Utilities performs these functions 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. To provide continuous delivery of drinking water, the journey begins at the Lake Kilby Water Treatment Plant located in the city of Suffolk. Raw water is supplied to the plant from both surface and groundwater sources. Public Utility owns and operates four lakes and five groundwater wells that comprise our drinking water sources. The four lakes have an impoundment capacity of 5.2 billion gallons of water and reside in a watershed of approximately 62 square miles in Suffolk. Lake Kilby Treatment Plant has a capacity of 33 million gallons per day, and finished drinking water is distributed via transmission mains and distribution piping consisting of over 400 miles of pipes ranging in size from 42 to 2 inches. The Department of Public Utilities conveys and collects the sanitary sewage from homes and businesses within the city through a system of approximately 370 miles of gravity mains and 35 miles of force main. The sanitary sewage is then pumped from one of the department's 65 pump stations into the HRSD collection system, where it is transported to either their VIP or Enanzman plants for treatment. The Portsmouth Water Company was organized under a charter in 1879 by the Virginia Assembly to convey water from the Dismal Swamp Canal to the city of Portsmouth. Through various acts of the Virginia Assembly, contractual negotiations, and city council resolutions, Portsmouth Public Utilities has grown over the last 150 years to serve the needs of its customers today. The Lake Kilby Water Treatment Plant and associated dams and watersheds are in very good condition. This is due in part to the development of a facility plan in 1981, which was subsequently updated in 1992, 2001, and 2010 to make significant improvements to the treatment plant. The first three phases of the plan included new chlorine feeds and storage tanks, a new reactor contact basin, rapid mix clarification, and a chemical building, two finished water reservoirs, and a finished water pump station and control building. The fourth and final phase of the plan is construction of the new filter facility currently underway. Much of the water and sanitary sewer piping systems, however, are aged well beyond their expected service life. Studies performed as part of the sanitary sewer consent order and sewer basin prioritizations indicate that the sanitary sewer system replacement needs alone are approximately $2 billion. The challenges presented require a clear and methodical approach to capital planning. The planning of our capital improvement projects is guided by the following principles. Every project must be developed to improve system service reliability and resiliency. Facilities and component systems must be simplified and standardized to improve operational and maintenance efficiency. Materials and systems shall be selected to improve durability, and asset life cycle is best improved by replacement rather than repair. The Department of Public Utilities is pursuing an ambitious and challenging capital improvement program using these guiding principles to plan, design, and construct infrastructure to maintain and improve utility service delivery and reliability. Projects have been identified to minimize service risk and address the assets most in need of replacement. With execution of the fourth phase of the Lake Kilby facility upgrade nearing completion, the department has shifted its focus to the aged components of the distribution and collection systems. Public Utilities has several projects and initiatives currently underway that support these strategic objectives. These projects include the previously mentioned filter project at Lake Kilby. This project replaces 16 existing filters, the oldest dating back to the 1940s, with eight new deepbed filters. In addition, the project includes the installation of ultraviolet treatment for secondary disinfection and the ability to incorporate ozone treatment should future regulations require it. Upgrades to the existing SCADA system will also be implemented, utilizing new technologies and improving situational awareness for plant staff. As part of the SCADA improvements at Lake Kilby, a plan for upgrades across the department has been developed. This five-year plan will replace the major hardware and software components of our existing water and sanitary sewer SCADA systems.
Because we're televised in this, would you tell the public what SCADA?
SCADA is the supervisory control and data acquisition. It is basically the brains of the department that gather data from various points and provide that information to our operations staff on how to respond to the needs of the system, whether it's lowering or raising the water tanks, increasing pump speeds, those types of things.
Or no screens.
Yeah, so that's an example of what a situational awareness screen would look like out at Lake Kilby. Public Utilities developed a comprehensive plan for improvements to the water distribution system in 2015 to ensure system reliability. The first two priority projects are currently under design. The first project includes the replacement of three water mains from the Lake Kilby Treatment Plant through downtown Suffolk. The second project is the installation of a new 16-inch water main along the I-664 corridor between Portsmouth Boulevard and Pewsville Road. The utilization of jointless fusible HDPE pipe for these projects will reduce the potential for leaks in the system and improve reliability by interconnecting critical pipe sections. The development of the downtown master utility plan in 2007 was spurred by the age of infrastructure and the desire to meet the needs of future redevelopment in downtown area. The downtown master utility is divided into four quadrants. Completion of the first phase of infrastructure improvements was completed in 2015, and construction of Phase 2A is well underway. Completion of Phase 2A is anticipated for late spring of 2019, and we anticipate bidding for Phase 2B early next year. One of our most visible assets in Public Utilities is our elevated storage tanks. In 2014, Public Utilities performed condition assessments of these structures and implemented a capital improvement program to systematically repair and rehabilitate these tanks. Concurrently, we updated our hydraulic model. By utilizing information from both of these efforts and reframing our plan using our guiding principles for project development, the department is currently evaluating the possibility of replacing the four elevated storage tanks with a single ground storage facility. This would simplify operations, reduce the reliance on customer demand to control operational decisions, and improve water age issues in the far reaches of our distribution system.
How big would that thing have to be?
We're currently looking at it.
Yeah. It's a trade-off, you know, we eat up more land.
Right.
Well, we may not need to. We've got two locations that we're currently looking at for feasibility. We're running our hydraulic model. Currently, including storage at our Clearwells out at Lake Kilby, we have about 9 million gallons of storage capacity. And it seems like that might be a little bit more than what we need, so we're evaluating what our needs are. And if we can do a groundwater storage tank, it provides us the flexibility of moving water where it's needed as opposed to having the elevated tanks which fix our hydraulic grade line. So, it may be two, we don't know, maybe two, one and a half million gallon storage tanks at the ground level, but we are looking into that.
And then the towers that are, the three or two that'll go down, what will that space be, would it be marketable to be used for any other purpose after the tower is removed?
Possibly. We have some antennas and services on top of those that we would need to look at relocating. It may be also something that we can discuss with IT if they had future needs for any of those types of things, but it would definitely be something that we could look at as well. Public Utilities has also been busy executing an aggressive phase rehabilitation plan of our 65 sanitary sewer pump stations. Many of these pump stations are in need of building structure replacements in addition to pump electrical power components, emergency generation, and resiliency improvements. During the first three prior phases, rehabilitation of 13 pump stations was completed. Currently, Phase 4 construction is underway at pump stations located at Victory Boulevard, Deep Creek, Norport, and Frederick Boulevard. Phase 5 looks to make improvements at an additional six pump stations and the implementation of standardized pump station packages to increase operational efficiency, reduce inventory, and eliminate our vacuum system. Approval of the FY19 CIP plan will allow for Public Utilities to begin survey and preliminary engineering of several large comprehensive neighborhood projects. These projects look to address both water and sanitary sewer infrastructure and where feasible stormwater systems. Some neighborhood projects being considered include Prentice Place, Craddock, and Glen Sheila. The planning principles and projects discussed this evening begin to address the state of our infrastructure. However, changing regulatory requirements by the Department of Conservation and Recreation pertaining to dam safety will require significant investment to make improvements to our dams. Additionally, a renewed focus on source water quality and protection is anticipated as the state and regulatory agencies continue to develop drinking water regulations and resiliency discussions take center stage.
I'm just curious, are there any federal-state funds involved in helping with the improvements that are necessary?
Not currently, but we are always evaluating potential grants and opportunities of that nature.
Say again, how many dams we got?
We have four.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to call for your attention that tomorrow night, Mrs. Stromier, this is under the city manager's board, and we're carrying over from the last meeting some of the items on the adoption of the resolution. of the items on the adoption of the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the Certain Memorandum of Agreement dated March 10, 2014, with the Hampton Roads District, Sanitation District, and 12 other localities regarding wet water sanitary sewer overflows. And I had shared with you what the background is, but if there are any questions that you have in regard to that, we are part of that group of localities that are under that order.
I think it would be good, good for me at least, to have, to refresh my memory on what the four quadrants are, and the fact that we have subdivided two into A and B. Where's A and where's B? And do you contemplate doing a similar-type subdivision for three and four?
Well, the easiest way for me to share that information was probably to provide you the graphic of the outline.
Okay.
You don't have to do it tonight.
All right.
It would be useful to have an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven map.
Okay, we can get that too.
I can get that too.
I still have one on my refrigerator.
Yeah, it might be outdated.
Yeah, it probably is.
Didn't have an A and B.
Well, the quadrants haven't changed. Phase 2 is from Crawford Parkway to Washington Street, and we broke that almost in half, basically because the contract would be probably a five- or six-year contract to get all of that work done. So we've broken it up in phases. So 2B will go from Court Street to Washington for the next phase.
From high to the?
And it's still high to Crawford Parkway, it's still that envelope, but Phase 2B is already designed, we just broke it up for bidding purposes. And to minimize the impact to the downtown residents, that would have been quite a construction area.
It'd be, again, useful to have that as a map.
We'll have, we'll get that, you can get that tomorrow, when the report back.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes our presentation.
All right.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you all know, I have been sending you proposed language with regard to potential changes to the council rules. I did receive some more suggest, proposed modifications. I could certainly send that out to you all. I'll send it out tomorrow so you'll be aware of the latest additions for your consideration.
I think the bottom line with that is just that we want to make sure that speakers who sign up for agenda items can also speak in non-agenda.
Exactly. And some tweaks, like just in the whole council, not individuals.
So I will send you the latest version tomorrow, and I will wait to hear from you all as to how you want to move forward.
All right. We will, yes, sir.
Do we have a closed session tomorrow at all?
Yes, sir.
Can we add on a previous discussion we had pertaining to the issue with the city attorney, city manager, the VRS issue?
Sure.
It's not long, it's just something I think council should consider out of fairness.
All right. Nothing else? We're adjourned.
Thank you.